I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 1st County Commissioners Meeting. If you'd all stand for pledge of allegiance and a prayer, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do bow your heads, please. Most gracious heavenly father, we just want to thank you for giving us a lighter taste of what's to come, Lord. We just thank you for the snow. We thank you for getting clean roads at the highway. Did a great job there. We just ask that you please be with all them throughout the whole season, Lord, as well as all of our emergency personnel, our law and our fire and our EMS. We just ask that you guide and direct us in what we're doing here this morning, that it's satisfying to you, Lord. We thank you most of all for that precious son that you give us and that terrible price that he paid for all of our sins, Lord. We ask it in your name, Jesus. Amen. First order of business, you have the October 6th and the October 20th meetings in your minutes in your pack. Entertain a motion for one or both?
I'm moving to approve both with a thank you for the fine job that Deb does. Just super.
We are very blessed.
We are indeed.
I know she takes them very serious and for the public to know that if you interrupt her eight times like I did the other day, she will roll her eyes when she's trying to get through the minutes. So I would like to be, I want to make sure in the next minutes that it says that Deb will roll her eyes.
We got a motion, we got a motion on the floor to approve both sets of minutes by Mr. Adams, second by Mr. Collier, all those in favor, sing five by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three oh. Treasurers report, just to acknowledge that we did get that and it looks all right to me. Any questions, comments?
No holds, right.
Moving on, claims. And I have not seen the claims.
It wasn't passed down. No holds. Brian Collier makes a motion that we pay the payroll and accounts payable claims of $5,659,747.86.
We got a motion on the floor by Mr. Collier to approve the claims in the amount of $5,659,747.86. I'll second the motion. Any further questions from the board or from the audience? I hear none. All those in favor, sing five by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Midwest Presort presentation, I'm assuming this is... Who's presenting this? Heard here. I'm not seeing him.
Maybe they'll be presenting tonight at the council meeting.
They need to be here first.
That's what I was kind of thinking, but that's the way it goes. We'll, we'll come back to that later, give them a chance to maybe get here. Agreement, sheriffs, extra duty solutions. Hello, sheriff.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You all had a happy Thanksgiving. What I'd like to do is present an agreement I'd like to enter into with extra duty solutions. This is a agreement that would handle all our off-duty employment. So this wasn't too bad of a deal to take care of internally when I first started, but we've been requested by a lot more agencies in a lot different areas with the data center and everybody else in to do off-duty security. So this, this agreement, they would handle all of our off-duty requests. It would go through them. They would have a database that they could contact the people that are interested in working off-duty. There's no extra money for us, for the taxpayers, for anybody else to pay. Everything that they get, they get 10% off the top. That comes off of whoever is hiring the deputies to do this. Plus, they would also take care of any workman's comp, which the deputies right now would not be receiving if they are out working security because they're on their own. That's not being taken care of. So I think it would be good for the county and for the deputies themselves, and it would be all in one place that everybody would contact to go, go through with. Any questions? I'll be happy to talk to you all about it.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but nothing major. I certainly support the opportunity that our law enforcement has for extra work. I, it will sound like I don't, but I do.
Yeah.
But I was curious about this company. I mean, what do they, what do the boys do now? Do they just do it on their own?
Yes.
So, so this kind of gives them an opportunity to have more opportunities for...
It's not actually more, but what we do is we charge a flat fee. So if Company B would call us and say, "We would like a deputy to work this security." Okay, this is so much an hour and this is what you owe us. But they're on their own. If there's something happens to them out there while they're doing it, there's no workman's comp to compensate them for that. They'll have to take care of their insurance and whatever happens to them out there on that also. Plus, there's no insurance to really back them up on that, where this company has, I can't remember what it is. Is there extensive insurance that would happen, that they would be covered with also if something would happen while they're working? And identification terms also would, would be implemented, as you can read in this. But they take the 10%. So say it's $50 an hour is what we would charge. So they would charge $61, $62 an hour. So that would cover the workman's comp fee for the deputy and would also cover their 10% charge on top of that for managing this for us. So there's nothing coming outside of the county or nothing coming out of the deputies' pay. It would all come from the company that wants to hire the deputy to work.
That was, covers my, my concerns. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Yeah. It's not been too bad up till now, but we're just getting so many requests now. And this duty also, like the other night for a basketball game, we were called at about 10 o'clock in the morning and said, "Hey, I forgot. I need a deputy tonight." That's kind of, kind of close here, you know? So this company would be contacted to have the list of people to send it out to. Plus, they also, if you don't request within a certain amount of time, say, "Give us 48 hours of request time," it's going to be $60 an hour as opposed to 50.
Now, I'm not a tax guy like my gentleman to my left, but the company that hires our folks, they're responsible for the 1099s and all.
Yep, yep. They would submit all that, and they would be paid upfront, too. So sometimes maybe a deputy works a project on his own, what we're doing right now. If they don't get paid, good luck. You got to find that yourself. This company pays you every two weeks, whatever you want. Whatever you work, you get paid. The company then has to go after that company. So it's on them to, to regain their, their loss or gain or whatever it is. So the deputy's going to be guaranteed to get their pay.
I've always been in favor of take home, I think the more, I guess you'd say, visual that we have with our, our vehicles, the better the, better the public feels protected and is better protected. But if there's an accident related to that company that they're working for that involves our vehicle, who pays?
That would prob, if there's an accident, say like somebody hit us or something, that would go back on just regular insurance. I'm assuming. I'll have to check into that and see. But also what we can do, too, with this company is, just to say the data center. The data center wants to hire a deputy to sit up there. Well, our vehicle's sitting up there, and at this time of year, it's going to be sitting up there running with them out there. We can put in there, we want an extra $100 an hour to pay for that vehicle, and that would come back to the general fund. So that would be part of that prepaying on that, on that fuel and the cost of that, that vehicle while it's being used in that, in that form. Yeah, but on the insurance.
That money gets reimbursed back to the county?
Yeah. That, that part would be, of the vehicle, would be reimbursed back to the county.
Usually the insurance follows the vehicle.
Yeah, I'd say that. But mainly, we're not utilizing anything driving. The deputy's not going to be driving a vehicle. If it's somewhere setting, it'd be setting in a road, you know, like you see on the side of the road. If they got construction going on like that, or if it's sitting in a parking lot of a school, or sitting at the data center or some other place where it's doing the security, the deputy's not going to be patrolling a place to, to utilize that to possibly get an accident. It's just going to be setting.
The only other question I have, Sheriff, is, and I appreciate all that information.
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought it was a very good deal, frankly. But, you know, the other opportunity for, like I should say, work that we probably get calls on would be our EMA or EMS, I'm sorry. You know, to go to a ballgame or to a rodeo or whatever they're requested to do. Does this company manage that or...
They could if they wanted to contract with them also. Yeah, they'd be happy to do that.
So it's not just, they do go beyond just your department?
Well, they would do just my department on this contract, but if Brent wanted to contract with them, I'm sure he could. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what he does personally, but I thought it might be an opportunity.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. That'd probably be a good opportunity for them. And you can also go outside. This, this is not just limited to them, because I told them, I said, "Our county fair is not going to want to pay $50 an hour for a deputy. We just can't do that. We're not going to do that." I told them, "I want to do that with myself," and they said, "No problem. You take care of that. No big deal. Do whatever you want to on that." So anything county-wide or something like that, we would probably handle ourselves. We're not going to charge that much.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I checked with a couple of the county sheriffs that have been using this, Cass County. Deputy Schroeder uses this, likes it a lot. He said he's had no problems with them. Very, very company. There's several other sheriffs, and this is nationwide, this extra duty, but quite a few sheriffs in Indiana are using this, and I haven't found anybody that's had a problem with them yet.
Well, I think this company's probably put together by a bunch of smart sheriffs.
It is a former sheriff that's doing it, as a matter of fact, yeah. I wish it was me that thought of it, as a matter of fact.
Retired or whatever. It's a good program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Before you leave me, on contracts like this, I usually have what I call an Exhibit A. It's a rider, and it has some provisions in there about nondiscrimination, some statutory things that we usually put in there.
Okay.
There's a, there's a non-appropriation clause. This one sounds a little different because it's not, I mean, the money, it sounds like would be coming back from the private entities that are utilizing the service.
Right.
It does have, I noticed, a 30-day termination clause, which kind of covers us for that provision. But if I could send that to you and you could send that along to them for consideration, it's just kind of to bring us all Ts crossed, Is dotted.
Absolutely. And did you get a copy of that, too?
I, I have, I have the agreement.
Okay, good, good. Yep, that sounds good.
Any other questions for Rich? No, I didn't entertain a motion.
I have a question for Ann. That addendum that you referenced, we have to have that in there, don't we?
It's the kind of language, I, I put it in there from a statutory standpoint, and usually nobody has an issue with it. Sometimes people get nervous about non-appropriation language, but under this particular agreement, they shouldn't. Like, it'll, it kind of doesn't mean anything, but I like to put it in there.
Correct.
Like both government.
I'll make the motion that we accept the extra duty solutions contract pending they accept Ann's addendum, that language.
Second that.
We got a motion and a second by Mr. Collier and Mr. Adams to, for the extra duty solutions with the addendums that Ann's going to be getting with them. Any questions from the board or from the audience? None others in favor, sing five by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Appreciate you. Do what?
Midwest Presort, did Kurt make it in?
Yeah.
You are Danny the one. Out of work. It's all yours, sir.
Presentation I'm going to hand out to you at the end that you can look through here that kind of summarizes what I'm going to go over. So I appreciate you having me here and being able to talk about what we can do for the county. And at Midwest Presort, I've been with the company now almost 16 years this coming January. And we have worked with Morgan County as a vendor now. I believe we first started in 2012 with Julie Minton when she was a treasurer. And then it evolved to working with Brenda Britton really closely. We've mailed out her, at the time, Form 11s in business personal properties. And we have deep expertise in mail for county governments. At Midwest Presort, we've been in business since 1988. We're located in Indianapolis. We have two production plants, one on the east side of Indianapolis, one on the west side by the airport. And we are the state of Indiana's largest, what you would term, mail house. And part of, one of our largest verticals, if you will, is county governments. We currently have the program, I'm about ready to, to go into some detail here, currently with about two dozen counties throughout the central two-thirds of Indiana. And essentially what it is, is we are what the USPS would term a business mail entry unit. And anytime you get over 50 to 100 pieces of mail per day as a production entity, like a county government, the USPS would term you a business mailer, and they would prefer you work with consolidators like Midwest Presort as opposed to handing the mail off directly to them. So currently, mail produced here in Morgan County, once you, once it makes its way to your central post office, then at night it's transported up to Indianapolis, and that's where it's actually processed and ready to be distributed. So if you drop a piece of mail in a blue box here at, you know, outside the county government, that mail's going to make its way to the central post office here, make its way to Indianapolis, be processed. And if you're mailing it simply across town, then it comes back to Martinsville the next day, and then is, is passed on to wherever the recipient. And so at Midwest Presort, what we do is inside of that, the postal service offers a discounted structure to consolidators that will do the processing as opposed to them. So as an example, just on the postage, currently a fully paid envelope through any one of your current three postage meters. So currently, the, there's a postage meter in the treasurer's office, there's a postage meter in the clerk's office, there's a postage meter in the sheriff's office. When any of your staff process that mail, they're applying what we call the fully paid first-class mail rate, which is for a one-ounce piece is currently 74 cents, for a two-ounce piece, I believe it's a dollar and 3 cents, and a three-ounce piece, it's all dependent on how many sheets of paper in the envelope. It's like a dollar 33. With Midwest Presort, we get a discounted rate in a reimbursement form for the post office for processing that mail for you. So in that case, that mail, we would allow you to meter at a rate of around 68.6 cents. So you're saving nearly four and a half, five cents a piece on that mail piece. And then for Midwest Presort, we're able to get that mail out of our building all the way down to somewhere around 57, 56 and a half cents. And then we get a reimbursement based on how much volume we process that day, how much, you know, mail we handed off to the postal service that day. So in this case, it's a win for you. You save money. It's a win for the post office. They don't have to pick up the mail, process the mail. And it's a win for Midwest Presort in, in the fact that we get a reimbursement for the amount of volume that we process every day. And so that's kind of the entry point to this, what we would call consolidating or presorting of mail. It begins with something so simple as those rates are already programmed into your postage meter. You just can't access those rates because currently you're processing the mail and you're dropping it off at the postal service. Once Midwest Presort courier starts picking it up, you just activate those rates, so to speak, inside the postage meter. You start applying the discounted rate at the meter. The county starts saving, you know, money through the postage meter itself. And then what happens is because you're using that discounted rate, you just can't hand it off directly to the postal service. You have to have a consolidator like us pick it up and process it, and then we convert addresses to barcodes and sort the mail to zip codes and do all the things that the postal service would do themselves. So that's the entry point. As the program grows, what happens is, right now you have three postage meters. And so on that postage meter, you have a hardware expense, a lease. You have hidden expenses. It's kind of the razor and blade model where they, you know, charge you for what they now call digital ink tanks to apply the stamp to the envelope. And then also you have hidden costs like tapes and supplies. And then on top of that, you have your own labor cost to stand there at the postage meter and figure out what this parcel or package should be metered at and what rate and how to apply the postage. And so in our program, what many counties here in central Indiana have moved to is they've eliminated all those postage meters. So they get out of the lease, they get out of the maintenance, they get out of the hardware expense. So in your case, what it comes down to is essentially Midwest Presort would charge you for a pickup fee and a metering fee, which is equivalent to about one of the lease payments you have on your machines. So you save the other two lease payments, you save over metering on mail pieces that perhaps your staff isn't familiar with, what the most effective rate for that mail piece to go out at would be. And so in that case, now you're saving not only the postage, but you're saving the hardware expense, you're saving the labor expense, the headache of having those leases where most of those multinational corporations have moved to overseas customer service that you have to deal with. It's not always the friendliest or the most efficient. And so in that case, we have this type of program in at just about every county here in central Indiana. So as an example, Hendrix, Boone, Hamilton, Marion, Madison, Johnson, they all use Midwest Presort. They don't meter the mail themselves. They've eliminated postage meters. We pick the mail up each night and, you know, process it for them. So here in Morgan County, we do this already for IU Health as one of our larger customers. So as an example, we have a courier that leaves our east side building every day. His first stop is here in Martinsville at IU Health, and then heads down to Bloomington and, and down there, picks up the mail for IU Bloomington, Indiana University, Indiana University Health, Monroe County. They also participate in this program. And then from there, he heads over to Columbus and picks up Columbus Regional Health, Bartholomew County, and then heads up to Franklin and picks up Johnson County and then back to our office. So in that, in totality, and to summarize, we would project that, just our deep expertise in county government, you're going to save roughly about 15% of your postage cost. So if the county right now is spending, in the, in the data analysis, I use Boone County, which is probably similar in volume to what I would project Morgan County, you're going to save, if, if the county's spending somewhere around 100, 120,000 in postage, you're going to save about 15% of that expense in postage. And then as we would do this analysis, and the, the key would be timing up, getting rid of your postage meters as they come off lease, and then we would take over the metering of the mail. By the time the whole program's implemented, we would project you would save somewhere to, including your labor cost, $4,000 to $5,000 a month. So at the end, if you were to outsource the metering, we pick up the mail, we process it every day. We would project, just in the postage, the hardware expense, in your labor expense, it's going to be somewhere around $5,000 a month in savings to the county. So anyway, that kind of summarizes the overall program. As an example, I worked closely with Dan Bastian here, the treasurer, and showed him, you know, as a deep expertise in mailing, one of the oversights that our competitors in the print and mail side of it, now moving away from just picking up the mail, metering the mail, processing your daily mail, to looking at your large projects, that $60,000 in savings doesn't include large projects like Dan's, the tax statements. One thing that our competitors do, do, do not do is when they look at like your tax statement mailing and the way a database inside of a county works, the software providers who we work closely with, like in Dan's case, he uses a software out of South Bend by name of Lao, the company, Lao. Other companies like on, on the assessor's side, Exoft, they're, those softwares are more concerned with the deed and the deeded name and not so much how to efficiently mail that mail piece when you have to mail a Form 11 or you have to mail a tax statement. So if you look at deeds inside of a county... So if you look at deeds inside of a county, right, if I own multiple parcels, I'm typically going to have multiple first names associated to that parcel. So as an example, if my wife and I owned, and we were in agriculture, maybe owned 10 parcels in the county, I may have one parcel that just has Kurt Boxel. I may have another parcel that says Kurt and Don Boxel. I may not have another parcel where I put Kurt D. Boxel. I may have another parcel that says Kurt Boxel and Sons. All those parcels would be mailed in a tax statement mailing in different envelopes because the way our competitors work is that first name and mailing address have to match in order to combine those parcels into the same envelope. Well, we do something so simple as just combining on exact match mailing addresses and not first name. So in Dan's case, we took his database, ran it through our software here a few weeks ago, and I believe we projected, compared to what he did last year, we would save the county somewhere around 8,000 to 10,000 mailed envelopes and at 70 cents on the postage side. I think the overall savings came out to around five or six grand is what he would have saved by using Midwest Presort this past spring as opposed to the out-of-state vendor from the state of Washington that he used. And so he got excited about that and then brought me into this meeting to talk about other things. And so that's just one area in bulk mail that we could save the county on top of this metered mail program. Another one that's quite common right now is voter registration mail. In all local county government or local government, there's only one department that the USPS allows to mail under their most cost-effective method, which is nonprofit, and that is voter registration, voting mail. So it goes, there's a process, we'd have to work with the clerk, we take them through this process with the USPS, you get them registered as a nonprofit, and then any of these postcards that you mail out or to educate the voter on where to vote, when to vote, how to vote, then all that mail can be processed at nonprofit rates, which get down into the 16 cent per postcard versus through the postage meter currently at 61 cents. So, you know, it's 45 cents a postcard, if you're Morgan County, you probably have somewhere around, I want to estimate, 55, 60,000 registered voters. So when you attempt to communicate to all those voters, whether it be via, you know, postcards or letters or however you communicate to them, you know, when you're saving 45 cents a postcard or 45 cents a letter, it adds up. So recently, we just converted Delaware County, as an example, to nonprofit, their clerk just last week, and they are moving away from precinct voting to vote centers. And they're getting ready to do some two or three countywide mailings to educate the voters on vote centers. And our projected savings of first class over registered mail or nonprofit mail with moving into nonprofit mailer was somewhere around 35, $40,000 per mailing in savings by moving to nonprofit. So those are just examples of when you partner with Midwest Presort, some of the things that we can do for you outside of just this daily metered mail program that just bring value out of benefits, so. So the next steps would be just to kind of engage us in conversation. Typically, what happens from here is there's this thought of, man, this sounds too good to be true, and there's a little bit of resistance between the current status quo and how we just do things. And moving forward, we understand that specifically, typically, it's the clerk who produces the most daily mail, they're kind of the central piece of this whole thing. Without the clerk's daily volume, then the numbers tend to not work in Midwest Presort's favor. So the clerk is always kind of central to getting on board. And we understand that there's sensitivity in the type of mail that they send, they send certified mail, they send, you know, just different types of mail that make it, if they're not familiar with the program, it can create some apprehension about letting go of how the mail is processed and who picks it up. So we propose moving into an analysis stage where we work with your different departments and through the commissioners and kind of figure out what's the best way to kind of figure out the next best steps in moving in this direction, so. That's it.
Any questions for Kurt?
Oh gosh, I've got a whole bunch.
Sure.
I like the idea, very creative and crafty, I like.
Yeah.
Seeing the possibilities. My problem is, I know the only time I ever sent a mass mailing is when I was trying to get elected a few years ago.
Sure.
And I understand the savings that go on with that and all the postage stuff. But as a commissioner, I don't send out any mail, so it's all the people, it's our treasurers and our clerks and all that. I guess you talk about the buy-in with, you know, going from what they've done to what they could do. And I'm not, I guess you say not wise enough to know how much I can say, tell another official what he can or cannot do. So what is the next step as far as the, you know, like you say, you just got Delaware County involved or we're like Boone County in size? What do the commissioners do to encourage it or do we say you gotta do it?
Now, that's a really insightful question. And the answer to that is, how do I say this? It's in the mechanism of how the money works. It's in the mechanism of how the daily money flows through the postage meter and invoicing back to the county. Typically, what has happened in like in Hendrix, Boone, Hamilton, Johnson and Marion, and it's made those programs really successful, is to your point, Mr. Adams, the commissioners delicately pull that postage spend out of the elected officials' budget, and then that postage spend rides at a county commissioners' level. And what I mean by that is, when you eliminate a postage meter and we do your metering of mail for you, we are spending money on the county's behalf. And just like in a postage meter, you have to first put postage money into the meter before you can process mail. You know, the post office is not going to let you run, spend postage and then be invoiced and billed later for the postage, right? You have to front the postage and then you spend it as you go. Very similar with Midwest Presort in that we prefer to get what we call a postage deposit. And it's typically, if you look at your 30-day spend, let's say the county as a whole is spending just as even numbers, $10,000 a month in postage between all your departments. So a two-month average would be around $20,000. And so we would prefer to receive a $20,000 deposit upfront. And then we invoice the county at the end of the month, and then you've got 21 days to pay. By the time we receive that payment, we're about two months out, so that's about $20,000 in spend. When we have to invoice individual departments with all the departments you have, you know, health department, sheriff's department, clerks, treasurers, assessors, it becomes a little bit messier on the financing side of it and how the invoices work and who gets invoiced at the end and those type of things. So in short, what all those other counties have done is they pulled that postage money spend up out of individual budgets into the county commissioners' budget, we work through the commissioners, and then the program as a whole flows through to the individual departments.
And we've already done a lot of that with our budgeting. And but kind of to capitalize before I'd go any further, I would want to, well, I don't, you know, want to make sure that the sheriff's department would be on board, the health department. Only department I would enjoy telling what to do would be the treasurer's department.
So that's.
So we do our talking and then we do our moving.
Right. Yeah, I would not do this unilaterally without getting others' blessings.
And why the cost savings is there and we will be looking. This is, thank you, you've set me up for my once a meeting. Senate Enrolled Act I in 2028 will annihilate us. And I've stated that every meeting since it passed, so that when the property taxes come out in '28, I will have a stack of minutes here stating this shouldn't have been a surprise. With that said, why there'll be cost savings to this, we'd also have to present the convenience and the workflow back to the department heads to where everyone's comfortable.
Yeah. And to your point, Mr. Collier, we do assessment mailings for just about every county in the state, so we are very familiar with SB 1. We do property tax mailings for another dozen counties. And everywhere we go, SB 1 is definitely at the top of just about every commissioner and county official that we deal with. To your point, business personal properties and what the effect that's going to have. I can just tout, like, one of our customers is St. Joe. We would mail typically for St. Joe 14,000 business personal property letters. This upcoming with exemption out 2 million, their projection about 500 is all will mail. And so, yeah, SB 1 is at the top of everyone's list, so.
How does this work if you pick up my mail today, then he's going to go down to Bloomington Hospital, then he's going to go over to Columbus Regional, and then he's going to go up to Johnson County? When's it get postmarked?
Today. So that's our SLA with the postal service. If we put first-class mail up today, it's got to go today. And so in the presort world, we actually bypass, because we're a two-shift operation, our day with the postal service ends at midnight tonight. So we have at both of our locations about three semis a night that come from the postal service. The first is around 6:30, 7:00, and the last is about 11:00. And by the time they pick it up, it's already been barcoded, it's been sorted, it's been strapped, it's sleeved, it's ready to go. It bypasses downtown processing plant at Lucas Oil, it goes right to distribution and then it's back to Martinsville the next day. And so if we pick it up today, we have to process it today, we get it in the mail tonight. Currently, we process between 250,000 and 300,000 letter pieces of mail a day. We hold this contract for the state BMV license plates. So when you receive a registration in the mail or license plates in the mail, that's us that's getting it to you. So with that, we process about 10,000 license plates a day, another 20,000 flats, the nine-by-12 pieces of mail every day. And, yeah, so they come to our facility three times a night, the mail leaves, goes right to distribution and it's back to Martinsville, Bloomington.
I will make the assumption that you've seen it, but in the movie Elf, did you like it when Buddy got stuck in the mailroom?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we don't do that anymore. We don't sort mail by hand or, it's actually pretty impressive when you come see production equipment like this run. So it's just that we're about the only company left anymore that has a courier network like us that comes pick some mail up, so we have no shortage, especially with SB 1 right now, of counties that are interested in moving in some type of savings direction. And when you have a program like this, it's essentially a win-win-win for everybody. You win, the post office wins, we win, there's no friction.
At the start of the year, I would recommend to this board, maybe at the start of the year, we advertise for the media, so it's an open, but we ask department heads to come in and we'll just sit down and have a little pow-wow. Kyle, I'll put you in charge of this and make sure, maybe have you come down, present to them, answer their questions so that they're comfortable with the flow.
Yeah.
Cost savings, all the taxpayers, including myself, are very interested in, but the workflow would be all your department heads.
That's why we projected, that's why I was thankful Dan put me in touch with you folks. Typically, where these programs stall or don't go anywhere is when everybody hasn't been brought in, there's a feeling of, this is my postage meter, this is my budget, this is my lease, and we'll continue just doing what we do individually.
I'll talk to Dan about that.
So anyway, so here's a proposal, you can look through it, so.
Kurt, thank you, sir.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take it two seconds.
All right.
When Mr. Carter gets back, I'm very familiar with the Indiana mail crafters, we use them to Jefferson Township North Crime Watch, and I know they save us quite a bit of money, Kurt, just at the local level township-wise. And Dave Keller owned it at the time and they did a great service and saved us a lot of money. And we only did publications for Jefferson Township twice, once a month only, but it really saved us a lot of money going with Indiana mail crafters. I know he's retired now, but it's a great service and it's a great savings for our crime watch, I know that. I'm going to go ahead and move on down to the appointments, Don, if you have any thoughts on the appointments.
I think I saw that letter, I think they suggested that Eddie take Justin's place, is that correct?
Eddie and Charlie, I think.
Charlie.
If you want to come up, Eddie, Doug, and we'll address this real fast. I thought he was kind of delegating it more to Charlie as well. Don't want to put words in his mouth.
How many hours you get this weekend?
About six hours. Well, guys went out for about six hours and then we had some trees fall, so I didn't call them back out, I went and took care of some and I had one guy go, but.
I'm glad you didn't call me every time, but I sure glad you're out there. Yeah, that's a very important, that Indianapolis metropolitan area tech and policy, have you been to any of those meetings?
No, not yet. The first one is, I think, this coming week or, it's this week.
There's, that's, they do a lot of things that we can benefit from. We are in, so.
Yeah, I'm going to try to make them and if I can, let Charlie go and then recap.
More responsibility on you, but until we get an engineer, we need a presence, it's, and I'll be glad to join you there occasionally. I used to go to those meetings with Anna, she, they're good people. There's a lot of people at the trough there trying to get their, stick their nose in it, but we need to be one of those noses, so.
Right.
It is a good organization, though. Eddie, I'd entertain a motion on the appointments for the MPO for technical end policy rep bill.
Second.
No, I'd entertain a motion.
Put Eddie in.
I'll make the motion and Don will second.
That's what we did.
Yep.
We got a motion to put Eddie in there and also Charlie, as his proxy is needed. Any other discussion from the board? Not hearing none, others in favor, seeing five, a saying aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Good morning. We currently participate in this program and what this is. We are able to get a partial reimbursement to the county for certain parental representation in certain welfare cases for children. It's an open-ended entitlement program through the federal government. And within the last year, we've been reimbursed about $7,500. It's not a big, big thing, but we work with the courts and the auditor's office and we turn in the claims and we do get that back.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do this? Collier makes a motion that we accept the cooperative agreement of Title 4E, cost recovery for public defense expenses in Title 4E cases.
Got a motion by Mr. Collier, second by Mr. Adams. Any further questions from the board and the audience? Not hearing none, others in favor, seeing five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three, zero. Thank you, Linda Summich. Mike Doherty, I believe, I've seen him come in earlier, economic development. Service agreement, yearly deal, Mr. Mike, all yours, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Mike.
We're here hoping that you will extend our partnership into the 2026 calendar year by reinvesting in Morgan County.
I would be glad to do that, but I want you to put an M-I-M behind your name so everybody knows what you do.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm the executive director of Morgan County Economic Development Corporation.
No, we really appreciate the work that you, this has been a stellar year for you and a busy couple of years, appreciate the job.
Thank you for your confidence.
Appreciate what you've been accomplished.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's made a lot of difference.
On the Morgan County Economic Development Corporation. On the Morgan County Economic Development Corporation Service Agreement for 2026, if you would.
Don't move.
By Mr. Adams, I'll second. Any further questions from the board, comments, or from the audience? Not hearing none. All those in favor, seeing five, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Mike, just so that you know, I have a lot of comments, but I'll just keep them to myself.
I prefer it that way.
For me?
I know. Me too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bridge sixty-eight update from Crossroad Engineering. Is Mark here? Eddie's gonna do it?
Eddie's gonna do her.
I don't have a whole lot. He was he was supposed to be here to do this, but I I met with him. Bridge sixty-eight is the one on Ballenger Road. The only hang up on that right now from closing that out and getting getting them paid and everything is the tree problem over there. Everything else is good, but that might have just a little bit on the cost, a couple thousand here or there, two or three on the tree removal that got taken out. Trying to work out an agreement on the but if we're saying within three thousand dollars of getting this closed out. They also said that Crossroads, when I met with them, that with the excavation, when the cost came in, they didn't have to do as much as what they thought. So they should be around roughly a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars less than the original cost, which is about ten and a half percent savings on that bridge project. So it should be closed out here real soon and be able to move on. But roads opened, everything's done. It's just getting the agreement on the cost because there was a couple, three or four trees taken out that shouldn't have been that need to be either replaced or settled on a payment. And they don't want to, we don't want to pay them off when it's not settled yet. So other than that.
I thought he settled on a monetary settlement in lieu of the trees. I thought I read that.
That's what he was wanting, but I haven't I've worked with Eddie and I know Crossroad and also Milestone out of Bloomington, but it don't sound like Milestones wanting to go ahead and do that. It didn't sound like to me.
Yeah, Milestone said that they had an agreement with that guy, the the two, the ones that are missing now. They dug them up and moved them off to the side for him because he was going to replant them. And now he's saying he wants either three or four trees replaced, or he doesn't want he doesn't want us to go to that extent and buy the trees, plant trees, and maintain them till they get full life, you know, and get to making sure they're going to work. He said he would agree with just like three grand or something like that. But then after I got contacted Milestone, they don't agree that it was any of their fault because he asked to move the trees, and he said he dug them up, and he don't know what the guy's done with them. But they they're saying they dug them up and moved them aside for the guy, and he was going to replant them himself. So I don't know if it's worth.
All I can tell you, and I've been I've had so many calls on this, it's kind of crazy. But anyway, go down there and look. I've got pictures on my phone. I shared them with Eddie as well and Crossroad as well. They're saying there was five trees cut that should not have been the right of way. They bought out and acquired required the first row to be taken out. First row was taken out, but then he's saying there was five in the second row. I can only find three that I believe was in the second row that the stumps are still there. They're right at grade. There is some. If it did, Milestone did go ahead and reflag that. Crossroad went back out. There's clearly one that's out that's in the right of way that was cut. But it's coming down to three, five. But to me, it's Milestones not going to take care of it. I did work with Natalie from Ecological Bloomington. They was able to work with Woody's Nursery. They're the only ones that have any, and they're he was wanting some that was at least ten to fifteen foot tall. The only thing that she could find statewide period was five to seven foot tall, and Woody Warehouse just put them in cold storage for the winter. But that come in to do all of it was a little over right at six thousand dollars. And I know Milestone, I I recommend they go ahead and do at least twenty-five hundred, three thousand, because I told showed that to the gentleman, Tony Kinsley. He said, that's way too high, and he didn't want them to have to spend that much. But he he still thinks twenty-five, three thousand is what he would be willing to accept at this point. And that's where it's at. And then whenever I heard back the last time was Milestones not paying anything, so.
Milestone says that they had an agreement to set them aside, and he don't know where they're at now, but the homeowner said, set the trees aside, he'll take care of them. And then the story we had with Justin was he traded it out for giving the guy a little bit of dirt, and it would be fine. So I don't know. I mean, has anybody talked to the man about dirt? Did that was supposed to be the agreement?
I did talk to him about dirt, and he waited so long that Tony didn't want to mess with dirt, digging with winter approaching.
Okay, so he wanted the trees or the money, then. But Milestones.
He's saying they did not dig any of them, set them aside for him. But that's I wasn't I was only I've been there twice since I've been getting all the calls.
I mean, we're holding up over a few, two or three trees for three grand. I don't know what to do. It's a legal matter between them and us now. I mean, it's it's a small amount, but I don't know where to go with this because the homeowner's the one who Milestone, and Milestone says no. Because he had an agreement with the homeowner, but ain't on paper, there ain't no agreement, nothing.
So nothing's in writing?
No, this is just a he said.
So were the trees in the right of way or not?
Couple, about three of them.
First row was definitely in the right of way.
So we don't have to replace those?
No, he got paid. He got compensated for that.
There was about three that there was about three that they got outside of. But I was told that they Milestone dug them up and moved them for him so he could save them. So I haven't ever talked to the man. Kenny's talked to him.
She said, so I can't tell you. All I can do is show you the stumps on the digging. And I mean, they're little, Brian. They're only size of a fist. I mean, that's how.
So they weren't ten to fifteen feet tall?
He's got some down there that's that tall, yes. And the whole plantation.
The size of a fist?
Oh, they're a little bigger now.
Probably ten feet tall, maybe a bigger round.
Yeah, as I say, that's that's not fifteen feet tall.
No.
No tree out there.
Walnut trees.
Yeah, they're all walnut trees. But and it is a plantation. I mean, I I.
Mr. Hale, you spent more time on this than any of us. What what is your recommendation back to the board?
To me, if we don't do something, he's going to file a tort claim. I just we're going to lose a thousand doing a tort claim, but two thousand to make him happier, twenty-five hundred would I offer him and just go on.
See, then I'll make the motion that we offer him twenty-five hundred and see if they'll settle. If not, Ann Ann will get more work.
Yep.
Say if we're gonna save, if we're gonna save a hundred, if you're gonna save a hundred and sixteen through Crossroads, we'll have, you know, be quicker just move on and get this over with, I think.
We got a motion by Mr. Collier to go ahead and offering twenty-five hundred and move on with this on Bridge sixty-eight right away on the walnut tree cutting. I'll second the motion. Any further questions, comments from the board or from the audience? Not hearing none. All those in favor, seeing five, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Thanks, Eddie. Anything else to discuss paving bid? You're right.
Real quick, while we're on bridge, where's Leonard Road? They got the guardrails on yet?
They don't have the guardrails on yet, but I have to check, see if they're working on them today after the holidays. The only thing on Leonard Road to open that road up is getting the guardrail up. They couldn't get the guardrail up till their concrete test strength passed, and it passed last week, so it's ready. Just can't open it without guardrails. So as soon as the guardrails are done, it'll be up and going. So they've been in contact, and they they get penalized for not having it done. I think it's fifteen hundred a day. So they should be on it pretty quick. So Leonard Road should be opened up, I would think, within another week. On the paving, that was something Crossroads wanted to go over, but I think they're coming on the next meeting to talk about some other things. But just a quick update on the paving. They have an agreement that Justin put together before he left with the CCMG coming up, the paving, putting plans together on for the paving for that. And I know we're not going to get the full funding that from them and from our budget to be able to do all the roads that's on that. So I told them to some of those roads were that was on the list got taken off of CCMG and put into the local paving because they are in an interlocal agreement, and they're not going to pay for those. So they got kind of pushed aside. So before they do the plans on some of these and before they put plans together on paving on Maple Turn Road, I don't really want to see Maple Turn Road go into CCMG with all the engineering stuff to ask up there because of the deadline. So they was gonna give you an update on where they're at on putting this together. As soon as they come up with the amount and we find out how many roads that we should have our approval here in December for CCMG, and we get that total amount that we're going to have dollar wise, then they're going to move forward on putting this together. So I told them to hold off on putting their plans together on what money we're going to spend on what roads until we find out how much money we got. So that's pretty much where we're at on the paving coming up for next year.
The the two classes, I guess you would call them, that I've set in on on LTAP and and all the changing that they're doing, it it sounds like we're not going to be receiving near as much as what we have in the past.
Right.
Matching. And so Kyle, welcome aboard. I'm gonna put you in charge of this. I think the three commissioners and Eddie, we need to get all the phaser ratings on all these roads because there's just mathematically, I mean, I can wear a goofy elf jacket, but mathematically, it is addition and subtraction. And we get to add what comes in, and then we subtract it in the form of asphalt at a hundred thousand dollars a mile. We won't come close to keeping up on these roads.
No.
Oh, no way.
And and we don't have it anywhere. And that's before, did I mention Senate and Road Act One? Before we get hit with that, there's no way these people we I take, you know, as I've sat up here now five years, I take more phone calls on people not going the speed limit and want me to lower the speed limit. So if they're not following the speed limit that's posted by lowering the sign, I've never understood how they're going to slow down. I haven't figured that one out. Two, you know, when it the chip and seal, everybody hates chip and seal. I can't wait till I get the phone calls in the near future on gravel. You took my road back to gravel. Because it's coming. And there there is unless they do something drastically up in Indy, there's just no way of getting around that. And that's regardless of who's sitting in these three seats. So I get a little frustrated. My kids tell me I need to chip up because it's the season. But I get a little frustrated when no one comes to these meetings and thank you for all those in attendance because they trust us. And then we sign a non disclosure agreement with a Fortune ten company on their stuff, and all of a sudden, I'm the most mistrusted person in the world. But that's how business is is done at that level, period. So either you trust me or you don't. And if you don't, I'm sorry. But it's gotten a little bit out of control on the comments and the retaliation. And the only thing I can tell everybody is that your property taxes are guaranteed to go up in 2028, and there are going to be less money here, mathematically proven through accounting firms and whatnot. So there'll be less services and less roads paved. And and I don't know how else, I mean, I don't know how else to say it.
Yeah, I mean.
And if I'm talking out of turn, you two correct me because this is everything I'm being I'm reading and being told and.
What these people need to understand is that chip and seal, that's preserving those roads a lot longer. And I know half the people in the county don't listen to this stuff. But if they understood, and if they don't understand it, they're welcome to call me and come out, and I will I'll explain it all to them.
No, don't offer them that.
That saves the roads, you know, well.
You 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 do not have time to do that, and I do not authorize you to do that because there's too many things on your plate right now.
Right. But we did fifty some miles of roads this year, and we normally do twenty some miles. And if we don't do this, their roads are going to be in a lot worse shape in the next few years. And they need to realize that. I mean, I don't like chip and seal either. But, you know, I ride motorcycles too, and I ride on a chip and seal road a week after it's done. I went and checked them on a motorcycle. If I can handle it, I'm sure somebody else can. They need to. It helps these roads. They do crack seal. We've started crack sealing roads. Contractors do it. We do it ourselves. We've done several miles of crack sealing, sealing the cracks before the winter until roads don't blow up. It's things that have to take place for asset management. And these these people don't realize what it takes. They just want to do away with it. They want to do away with it, they're gonna have a lot of trouble.
And that would be a good term, asset management. And I think I think we're going to have to really put our heads together on the direction that paving's going and try to preserve. I mean, there are main minor connectors throughout the county that will have to continue to be paved. Haleysville Road in my district, you know, Egbert in my district, you know, we we got on the the map a little late, but Centennial has now been through United has been submitted to help get some matching funds. And we we got minor connectors throughout the whole county that, in my opinion, would take precedent over these county roads that have five houses on a four mile stretch. And unfortunately for them, they they're in the country, and they're going to have a country road.
Yep. And I mean, the chip and seal, it's it is a good preservation tool. And I I've done a ton of them in our district, in my district. And I mean, that's it's what you got to do.
And I think some people think a chip and seal road is going to stay chip and seal. They don't understand the fact that that is to preserve it for three or four more years till we can get the money to get that road resurfaced, you know. And a good one, you can let it go five years before it's a trouble, you know. And just because it goes chip and seal, don't mean it's going to stay that way forever.
And with that said, I also have several people that are on the county borders who compliment us. I don't want to put down any of my fellow commissioners in adjacent counties, but I I do get compliments on our county roads. You can definitely tell the county lines on many of our roads go into surrounding counties.
Yep.
And I have farmers tell me that all the time.
Yep.
So thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. Grappling truck purchase next up, sir.
Let me grab my papers. Was that we get I came up for one thing, and I got five.
Way to be prepared, Eddie.
On the hot box as well.
I'm looking to purchase a grapple truck, which is some people call it a hurricane hauler. It picks up the trees, hops aside, puts them in the back of the truck, one piece of machine doing it instead of using a grader all sideways in the middle of the road. When we have these storms like we had last year in the flood and all the trees falling, we spent a month just cleaning up trees that we had pushed off the road from that storm. We need we need to move forward with with my opinion and a lot of the other guys like to have this so we can double up our work and get more done.
And you will go in numerical order? District one first?
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna start where. But no, it's it's in pretty good shape.
Wherever the tree falls.
Well, that's, yeah.
District one is looking pretty good.
That's that bad, we'll all be out there with chainsaws.
But I've got it set up. We we can go with a one year or a three year, five year, seven year lease. I don't want to spend all our money and purchase it outright. So I'd like to just do it on a lease program and maybe go with a five year lease. And I'll let you look at the numbers, make sure you agree with that. But I don't know if we need to drag it out to seven years. And I don't want to do a three, but I'm thinking a five. But you guys decide that, and you decide if you're even going to let me entertain this to be able to do it. But if you do, I'm just asking to.
That was southeastern or who you going to, Eddie, on that leasing on?
No, not lease. I'm lease purchase.
Oh, lease purchase, okay.
From this company, and it's same.
Same company you got the other one from?
So it's through Sourcewell and the company that it's a Peterson LTL three Lightning Loader is what it's called, through the government leasing program.
So what's the interest rate?
That's what you need to look at. I have to get it all together for you.
Get it to me?
Yep.
Yeah, I have to.
Are we looking to do the same thing with the hot box lease, or are we purchasing?
I want to. I'm good with the lease on that, and it's it's around forty-five thousand, forty-nine if we go with the winch and the gadgets and all that. But there's some things I could do.
And we only have one hot box, right?
We do.
So do we have enough manpower to man two hot boxes at the same time?
We had guys waiting on it all year because before we chip and seal roads, we go around and we patch the roads. And when you're trying to patch seven hundred miles of road with one three ton box, you know, dump truck does it, but you're, you know, you take a chance of your asphalt cooling off, or you got to worry about the weather with the hot box. You can leave it in there, even overnight if you had to. But guys are fighting over who's going to take the hot box for the day. And, you know, if you got a guy filling potholes, milling and filling potholes, and you got another guy trying to patch roads, getting ready for chip and seal, I'm looking to buy another one so we can stay up on preserving the roads. So, I'm recommending a three year on that because we're cutting the budget on equipment for next year by, I think, 200 and some thousand. Yeah, $225,000 for next year, but we're moving, they, yeah, they did something with the budget to where what we are approved for, for next year, they decided.
We have to come back because his operating balance, he would have to come back and do an additional appropriation after the first of the year when we see what they don't use out of the 2025.
So, what we don't use out of this year is going to be turned over to that. And, I think that's, that's a total.
How much is the hot box?
50,000, just a hair under. 200, yeah, 276,000 is what we're turning back over from the, this year. That still leaves us with 120,858.
If we got it, if we got it in there, then.
After these purchases, we still have 126,000 moving into next year.
I mean, maybe the grappling because that's going to be a much more, but a $45,000 hot box, why don't we just buy that after you get the appropriation?
We can buy it.
In February.
That was my intentions, but I didn't know how much of that she was going to take from us this year and I didn't want, not her, I'm just throwing it out there that she's taking the money, but she's not really. But, I, I was, I would like to just purchase the hot box, but if it cuts us to where you'd rather lease it, just leaving options out.
I'm inclined not to pay interest on a $50,000.
Yeah.
Hot box.
I'm good with that.
When we have it within the line item.
Yep.
I agree.
I just didn't know how much she was going to pull it off.
The grappling truck, what was its total cost? It's going to be a little bit more.
It's 230, it's 239,500 and with a five year, that'd be 54,800 a year. Or, if you go seven years, it'd be 41,000 per year.
And, again, I, I hate obligating. We got, Don and I have three years left on our term. I hate obligating anybody any longer than you, you have to if it's in our cash flow. So, I'll review those. What action do we need to take on these?
What's that? I didn't hear you.
He said, "What action do you need to take?" I mean, obviously, you're not, you can table this and, and review it.
You need to talk to the council too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can talk to them tonight. Tell them I said aye.
I would note, if, if we are getting into a three year lease, a seven year lease, I hear those things, I want exhibit A. I want exhibit A, I want non-appropriation language in there because that does matter in that, in that sense, so. I can get you that. It's mine.
I'd entertain a motion on the grappling truck and the hot box and wait till Eddie comes back with exactly what we need. Still give you a chance, go to the council tonight and talk to them about it.
Did you say you'd entertain a motion? You mean a motion to table?
Table?
Okay.
Brian Collier moves to table.
Second.
Got a motion, the second table, the grappling truck and the hot box. Any further questions from the board or from the audience? Not hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
So, make sure you go tonight because I'm, I'm out of town tonight. Tell them what you're doing so that they know. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Especially if we're encumbering and we're switching and they're taking, but then you have to bring back over. Because I'm not even for sure I followed all, everything that she said.
That encumbrance letter is due by the end of the year.
It's not an encumbrance.
That's not an encumbrance, they're just taking it out of the budget.
Before the council could approve the budget and pass it, they had to reduce it because the operating balance was in a negative. And, we had to wait and see how much he wasn't using in the 2025 appropriation. So, when that comes, all shakes out in January, then he can come back in February, do an additional appropriation and then go back there.
But.
Yep.
By saying that the appropriations was in the negative, they really wasn't in the negative.
It, it was because they, they have to assume that you're going to spend everything that was appropriated in 2025.
Yes, and I didn't.
No.
So, I'm trying to spend it to get what we need, not moving into the next year. See what I'm saying? We have 200 and, we've got about 300,000 in there right now that we didn't spend. And, we were going to go on a lease program for $50,000 a year. I guess I'm trying to sell it to you instead of the council. I mean, am I making sense with what I'm?
Well, you'd have to submit the leases, they would have to be approved by attorney.
Attorney.
Get it all done in the next two weeks. I'll be back here in two weeks.
Yep.
So, can we do the hot box?
You can purchase it now and encumber that as long as you have actually signed the agreement and it's purchased and you're just.
But, you can't sign the agreement until attorney looks at it.
Yeah, make sure, make sure you got it down.
All right. Thank you.
Bridge 166 next. Design award.
Yeah, that was a design award for Bridge 166. Did a scoring process on that and it came out, it was close for top three, but Aegis ended up with that design on 166. I was just going to ask your guys' approval to go ahead and award that to them. That's the Waverly Bridge there by the, up in the park.
By their north of the park, right there.
Yeah. What's that?
That's an amount.
I don't have that with me, to be honest with you. I don't know that amount. There's, there was, it wasn't a bid, it was just awarding it for them, for them to design that. I don't, this is what the engineer normally handles and I hadn't looked into that that deep. I don't think they priced that out front.
And, was this for Crossroads?
Right? Am I right, Brian?
Right.
Yeah, that doesn't get priced outright on those, it's just not the way that works. They, we just award them to do the design of the project, that all comes later. And, yes, it would be Crossroads. I think United was second on that and they were pretty close. But, that's who had the highest score. You all good?
See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. You have a tort claim in front of you?
No, to Aegis.
It's Aegis, but you want to go ahead and warn it? I didn't score on it. Did you score on that, Brian? Because I didn't, you and Don, you did. If you feel comfortable with it, go ahead and.
Brian Collier makes the motion that we accept the design award to Aegis for Bridge 166.
We got a motion by Mr. Collier to the design award to Aegis for Bridge 166. I'll second the motion. Any further questions from the board or from the audience? Not hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. See you in two weeks, Eddie. You got a tort claim before you right now?
Brian Collier makes the motion that we send our tort claim on to our insurance carrier.
We got a motion by Mr. Collier, go ahead and forward that tort claim on to the insurance carrier. We got a second by Mr. Adams. Any further discussion? Not hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. You got one last contract here, consulting contract. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collier because he was working on this and I guess Deb gave it to me right when I walked in, so.
Table this until the 15th. It's not on the agenda, it's not been advertised.
Good. So, that's in the form of a motion, Mr. Collier?
Yes.
We got a motion to go ahead and table this consulting contract till December 15th. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion on the board? Not hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero to table that consulting contract.